All right, good evening. Welcome everybody to our next installment, the April installment of our quarterly Town Hall event. We want to welcome everybody. Glad you all got a chance to come. As I stated previously, just before when I gave the five-minute notice, I gave everybody note that there's refreshments over here, thanks to DECA and the Atheists folks. They brought us a little bit of pizza and some munchies and some water. What we'll do to start this off, I'm going to give some rules of the road in a minute here, but let me start by introducing the front row, our honored guest, John Hotmacher. Do you have any opening remarks for us?
Sure.
All right, everybody take five.
Everybody wait while I write notes. Ten, fifteen minutes. Yeah, I just wanted to, one, thank everybody for coming out. And two, talk to you about a couple things. One, and you'll hear it throughout here, we're really approaching the peak of the construction season here, really the peak of probably the entire project, which will, the peak that will impact quality of life, as you know, which is really laying utilities and all those kind of things. So, I know it's inconvenient, I know it can be difficult at times, I know you come to work or you go one way to a place during the day and you're not quite sure if you're going to be able to go back that way at night. But, you know, it is what it is, and we have to do these things, we have to do this construction to prepare the utilities to accept the massive growth that's going in anyway. So, I guess my message is, I would ask for your patience because there's really no way around this and it's the way it has to be. And there will be inconveniences, and I think, you know, you'll hear from the different venues, the little email that comes out every day, what do you call that?
Notes from the garrison.
Notes from the garrison, and those are your best, your best source of information on these things. I'd also like to put a pitch out there, is there anyone new here, their first Town Hall, up there? No? You wouldn't raise your hand if you heard that. Put a pitch for the United Club though. So, it's a spouses' club here on Camp Humphreys, it does a lot of great things, and it really improves the quality of life for everybody on the post, even for people back in the States who went to their holiday bizarre and bought a bunch of stuff for you and brought it back, so her quality of life was improved as well. So, I just encourage you to check it out and try to get part of that. There's two other things that are sort of, I've been involved with on the periphery that I wanted to let you know. If you've got boys in either high school or middle school that are interested in football, they'll learn at football camp as a second, third, I think the second is the high school and then the third is going to be middle school. And there are some professional, former NFL players, I think who was in the Hall of Fame, actually, and then several coaches, who've been coaches for years, that are coming here to help us over here, they've done it in Germany, so if you've got kids and you participate, I'd encourage that. The other thing is, and you're going to see posters about it in my last one, is Gary Sinise is coming to do a concert here on the 30th of May as part of Spring Fest. So, I would ask you to come out for that, I'm a big fan of Gary Sinise's, I mean, he's tireless for our veterans. I know that as of last October, he had built thirty-three houses for wounded veterans, himself raising the money and doing that. And he's helped guys in my former unit that I was serving in and improve their quality of life. And he is coming over here at our request to do this concert, he'll be up at Camp Casey doing a concert on the 29th, and he'll be down here on the 30th. Now, I will tell you, I was skeptical the first time I heard that he was an actor in a band, you know, it's like karaoke, but he really is good. He plays bass guitar and he's really, really good, the band is really good. So, I would encourage you to bring your family out and attend, it'll be right over there near the main gate, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's all I have, does anyone have any questions for me? Shocking. Okay.
Thanks, sir. Okay, as we, I know everyone said they'd already been to one of these, just in case you haven't, we'll go through every staff section and areas supporting tenant on post, kind of put out information what's going on, changes, et cetera. Big thing is, like John Hotmacher said, we're hitting the construction peak. You know, with the great weather comes also good construction weather. So, there's going to be a lot of road closures and changes to how traffic especially flows around the installation. Public Works is going to cover that tonight also. So, throughout this, so we'll go through all the directors, and at the end of it, we'll also have an open discussion period, so you can ask any questions you want. If you don't feel free or you don't feel okay standing up answering or asking questions, we'll have posted three by five cards, you can write your question down, you can send it up, and we can go with it that way. And also, I want to introduce Colonel Richard Lindsay, he's the deputy commander for 121 Hospital up in Youngstown. We know that there's been concerns associated with medical care on Camp Humphreys, and he's here to kind of tell you some of the additions that are going on over the next, actually over the next week or two, and then extending out to improve our medical facilities and also our service. So, he'll also be open to any questions that you may have when we get to the open discussion. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike. I think that's my only words to give out.
A couple of real quick things, we are streaming live on YouTube, so put your best face on, silence your cell phone so they're not ringing, it's going to be posted onto Facebook, it's streaming live right now, that's kind of cool. For those of you streaming live and checking this out, you also have an opportunity to partake by asking questions on Facebook, which we'll review at the end and get an opportunity to answer back. So, if you come up with a question, post it on Facebook, and we'll get an answer back to you. We'll get to the question and answer part, but we're going to turn it over to Mr. Whipple, he's going to recognize our volunteer for the quarter with the help of Sergeant Major McCoy and Colonel Compton.
I'm going to ask if Sandra Rapinski is in the room? Yes, come on down, please.
Come on down.
Okay. Well, we'll announce you first. So, this is Sandra Rapinski, she is a youth sports coach. Well, she...
Camera. Get camera up here, please. Done this before.
Our active duty volunteer of the quarter is Captain James C. Nill from 32GSA. Our retiring volunteer of the quarter is Mr. Dennis A. Pulaski, he's with Boy Scouts. At this time, we have two units that we'd like to award streamers to their guide on, Alpha Company of the 607, 602nd, and also HHSC of the 532MI.
And the reason we're recognizing these folks is, we actually exceeded the capacity for giving out streamers to the sharp ones, which is a good thing. I think we gave out eighteen streamers that day, and now we've got three more to give out. So, we had about four hundred to five hundred participants on our last sharp one, so excellent awareness around the entire community for sharp ones. So, thanks again.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Rich Sires for DP TMS, this is the Garrison Operations Director. If you haven't done so already, please attend our newcomers briefing. It's every Tuesday at nine o'clock in the Super Gym Conference Room, it's on the first floor. If that Tuesday falls on a holiday, we hold the briefing on the very next day. Korean Head Start Program is USFK directed program, mandatory for all incoming military personnel to attend within ninety days of arrival. It's a three-day program sponsored by the city of Kyungtae. It features classes on Korean history, government, local life and culture, adequate and basic Korean language. Spouses are encouraged to attend, however, this program is not for children, you'll have to find a babysitter or use your CDC. On the slides, the dates for the next Town Hall. You can find a lot of emergency information, emergency preparedness information by searching online, but our emergency manager, Mr. Park, can give you a brief upon your request. Next slide. Please share the roads, soldiers must train and space is limited, please keep your speed down to ten miles per hour when passing soldiers in formation on the roadways, and that's seventeen colors per hour if you're in your Korean car. We'll start getting more and more rainfall as we enter monsoon season here in Korea, generally it falls between June through September. Camp Humphreys has been fortunate in the past several years and has not been in the way of the typhoon in the direct path, but please be aware of this potential weather threat. We have several methods of alerting the community and getting out warning and emergency messages, including the giant voice speakers, interior building speakers, and through social media. If you hear the sirens go off over the giant voice towers, the loudspeaker system, it only means one thing, that is to get inside. Please move indoors and await further instructions. We call this shelter in place, and we use this method to address many potential hazards. You can sign up for the telephone alert system, the applications are available in the back for those who wish to receive an automated phone call or emergency messages that also include school closures and road condition changes. Next slide. The next big theater-wide exercise is focused passage, which is a non-commanded evacuation exercise, or NEO. Ensure your family knows who their unit-appointed NEO warden is and contact that person for information on what is required of you to support that exercise. The dates in red are Korean holidays and the dates in blue are US. A sixteen-hour resiliency training is required for US soldiers, and June fifteenth is our Garrison Change Command. I'll be followed by MWR.
Evening, everyone, I'm Clay Combe from MWR. I've got twenty-plus events to cover here, so I'm not really going to try to fill you on everything that's going on. I just want to make a mention of the things that are on the slides. So, to get started, the twenty-fifth is the Amazing Race, this is maybe fourth or fifth year we've done this. Just want to mention about that, that you can sign up here at the CAC. In the first place is round trip airline tickets anywhere in Asia for each member of the team. In second place is KTX tickets for each member of the team, so it's certainly worth looking into. We have our annual volunteer recognition ceremony here on April twenty-second at six p.m. Next slide, please. I want to mention, on May second, we have a mother-son dance, we do this mother-son, father-daughter dances a couple times a year. General Hotmacher mentioned the USA Football Clinic on the second and third of May. Just to kind of clarify there, on the second, it's open to eighth through twelfth graders, and then on the third, it's seven, eighth to seventh through sixteen. The clinic on Saturday is a little bit more for skilled players, and the clinic on Sunday is a CYS-type clinic where we're trying to get kids involved. We have a new spring menu happening, we're going to launch at Alaska Mining Company on the fourth. I mentioned a few things, we're going to add to the menu for the summertime, a cranberry chicken salad, a feta turkey salad, we're going to have a Malibu chicken flatbread pizza, anyway, turkey green chili sandwich, so we get it, that we're trying to lighten up the food for the summer and keep the menu interesting. The Wizard Oz will be performed here, May eighth and ninth and tenth, here at the CAC, really worth seeing, the Theater Group does a great job. Spring is planned, 5K, 10K on May ninth, there were reverse triathlon that is at the Splash Blast on May twenty-third. Splash Blast is opening just after the reverse triathlon, I think, on the twenty-third, so that's the opening date for that one, Memorial Day weekend. Spring Fest, again, Gary Sinise will be there in the evening, six to eight. We have a lot of great entertainment on that day, lots of stuff going on at the Spring Fest food, all kinds of different things out on the Independence Park field, it's going to be great. There's our father-son dance, father-daughter, sorry, on sixth of June, happy birthday 5K on the thirteenth, superhero brunch on the twentieth, Boss Beach Blast, the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighteen jam, the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth they follow on, that happens at Youngco Beach, and then the Fourth of July celebration that we always have will be on the fourth. There's Summer Blast, Fun Run, a Father's Son Day, an outdoor rec, and I just want to mention the last couple of things that didn't make the slide. May tenth, we have a Mother's Day brunch at Alaska Mining, and we have, May fifteenth, we have a comedy tour at the Flight Line, and that comedy tour is moving to Suwon on May sixteenth, so thanks for your attention on that. I want to, I'll be followed by Derek Hall from PAIO.
I'm Derek Hall from the Garrison Plans, Analysis and Integration Office. I'll provide information on transformation and service providers temporary moves. Starting with transformation, we and our host nation partners are building six hundred and fifty-five new facilities to accommodate Youngsons and Area One's relocation to Humphreys with a land increase of two thousand three hundred acres and a shared cost of ten point seven billion. There are no major unit moves scheduled to occur in calendar year fifteen. We expect the latest Eighth Army Unit Movement Order to be released by the end of month, May twenty-fifteen. The Region Transformation Office was recently renamed Humphreys Transformation Office. The HDO is a team of Garrison employees dedicated to all things Humphreys transformation, with their office located here on base. Next slide. This slide shows two community support services scheduled to move within the next ninety days. First, the Sixty-Fifth Medical Brigade move slash expansion will transfer certain operations into Building Three Seventy. Let's move a free space within the clinic, that'll be converted into additional primary care exam rooms. The second move on the July timeframe is our chapel operations, that'll temporarily relocate from the main post chapel to Building Five Seventy Seven on the first floor. As we progress through transformation, this brief will continue to increase and include more temporary and end state moves relating to community support services. And with that, I'll be followed by DPW.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Pulaski, I'm the director of Public Works. This slide here shows major projects on the installation. Right now, there's sixteen major projects, in the next few months, we'll add three, those are the ones that are shaded in gray, and we really reached our peak in terms of number of projects on the installation. The five in gray are projects that are nearing completion and we'll soon see them complete, so we truly are at the peak construction here, and in terms of inconvenience to the community, we're there. And so, but it's going to start getting better as we complete these facilities. We already heard some comments about infrastructure and the road construction. By the middle of May, we will be at the peak in terms of inconvenience to the community. And we try to take every effort to mitigate, minimize those inconveniences, but again, it's the price of progress. And so, between the middle of May until December, we're going to be kind of like at a status quo in terms of inconvenience, in terms of the road construction, in terms of the utility infrastructure, but if you can hang in there with us, you know, starting by about the end of the year, we're going to see roads opening up, a lot less closures, and so, the next five to six months, seven months, those are really the tough months to be around here, but if you can deal with driving around the post now, I think you'll do just fine. Next slide. Just a list of some of the closures I'm going to cover, go ahead and go to the next slide. We've had a couple of road closures up in MP Hill area, they'll continue through May. Next slide. Super Gym, you know, it's always a mess over in that area, whenever we're going to be done, we'll be done sometime. So, we're on phase five right now, I'm not going to tell you how many more phases we've got, you know, just keep coming back each quarter and we'll keep you updated. But, I think everybody's aware of the real significant closure there on perimeter road, and that's a long one, that's going to be until, you know, summer of sixteen. You see there on the trail, or on the chart, there are pedestrian paths going around the Super Gym area, you've got the detours there. Go ahead, next slide. So, Fourteenth Street, that's over by the MP Hill area, that's going to be opening up, you know, right about the, on a good time, the middle of May, because we will be closing down, which is called the Future C Avenue, the road there over by the Air Ops facility over on the north side of the Signal and the MP DMFs there, that section road's got to get closed out, but when that's closed, we'll have Fourteenth Street bypass opened up. Next slide. So, this chart just kind of brings together those closures, you know, so I've got some dash lines there showing, in green, kind of show you how to get from the one side of the installation to the other side of the installation, and it does amaze me how I continue to meet people that aren't aware of the C Avenue bypass, it's been open for quite some times, several months, and I am noticing, of course, now with the perimeter road closure, more traffic on the C Avenue bypass. So, again, you know, this is about the worst it gets, if you can live with that, sort of about fifteen May, just hang in there, it's just going to get better. Okay, next slide, last slide for DPW, it's just another partial road closure, and that's going to be over by the Morning Call Conference Center, which is under construction, and that's going to be another long road closure, starting here next month. I'll be followed by Garrison Safety.
Hello, everyone, I'm William Hansel, the Installation Safety Manager. Just got a couple of things, I want to cover spring, summer safety, heat injuries, just hydrate, 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 camping, skating, I'm seeing the kids out here starting to hit the road with the skateboards and the skates, so parents and commanders, please put it out, let's reinforce it, we've got to wear some personal protective equipment, helmets and those things, and let's protect our children. Driving safety, let's try not to drive while we're fatigued, we've got holidays coming up, so try to rest. And then, as I said, construction vehicles, I'm sure everybody's experienced at least one big truck out here, so please pay attention and watch your children while they're out there, sometimes these trucks are loaded and can't stop in time. And then, home safety, now that we're talking action plans and emergency plans, let's try to go ahead and rehearse those as families. If you can, take some time out of your day, go over your fire drills and things like that. And then, of course, spring cleaning, as my wife always says, comes checking the smoke detectors, the carbon dioxide, so please do that. And of course, you can get some more information on our website right here listed at any time. Again, thank you for coming, that's all I have, and I'll be followed by DPS.
Hello, I'm Jeff Thomas, I'm the Emergency Services Director. These are our office closures for the next quarter, that's Passon ID in Building Five Forty-four and Seven Twenty-four, and Military Police Administration Office. Next slide. Nine-one-one, I think most people know that we don't have an automated nine-one-one system. If you have an emergency call from a commercial line or a cell phone, zero-three-one-six-nine-zero-seven-nine-one-one. It's important that you know your location, which is a building number, not a unit, a building number, and then a good callback number. D-bid registration, we're coming into the summer rotation once, if you AIP'd or extended in some way, make sure that you go to the Passon ID office and adjust your D-roads, you don't want to be archived in D-bids. Next slide. As was mentioned before, a lot of people are riding bicycles in the summer months, make sure you have the proper safety equipment, in daytime, you need a helmet, and at nighttime, you need a helmet or a fluted vest and front mirror lights. You have to register your bicycle, please don't ride on the sidewalks unless you have small children, and ride on the right side of the road. You can register your bikes at Building Five Forty-four, that's the one-stop center on the first floor of the Passon ID office. And I'll be followed by the Legal Office.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Lieutenant Earl Stell, I'm the OIC for the Camp Humphreys Battalion Legal Center. We just had the one slide, the hours are there, I'm not going to go through a lot of the details that are on the slide, they're pretty self-explanatory, our location, everything else that's there. The one comment about our lunchtime hours, we do have limited services now during lunch. We are open at the Legal Assistance Office during that twelve to thirteen-hundred timeframe, so if you have issues, can't get ahold of anyone, or you want to come by, that's the best time for you. For any of your soldiers, we are open during that time, for the time being, we've recently added that hour to the schedule. As far as the services, we do offer a full range of services for members of the community, legal advice on personal matters, anything at all, really, sort of criminal issues, those are handled elsewhere, we can help connect you with those services as well, if those are the types of questions that you or your soldiers are having. We also have the Tax Center, that's the last thing I'll plug here, the Tax Center is open until the end of June. One comment though, and that is that everyone overseas, people probably know this, you have an automatic two-month extension from the April fifteenth deadline that applies for personnel that are overseas, so you can file your taxes up until June fifteenth without any sort of, any issues. One caveat to that however, and that is that if you owe money, that extra two months does not, it's not two extra months for you to pay the money that you owe. You would accrue interest if you wait to file, not our rule, it's IRS rule, but that is essentially how it works. But, up until June fifteenth, and then for the next couple of weeks after that, until the end of June, we will be open for tax issues, tax questions, we can do electronic filing, completely free, one-hundred percent free, to you, to your soldiers, to the family members, so the phone numbers are there if there's any questions or anyone would like to make an appointment. Things are very slow now, after the April fifteenth deadline has passed, so generally you could walk in now if you need information or want to get your taxes prepared. And one last thing, and that is I have with me back in the back Captain Hicks, she's one of our legal assistance attorneys, she's here tonight if anyone has any questions, she has the power of attorney, notary, paperwork there with her, if anyone has that type of need, she's happy to help you out here this evening. We are, actually, this is Captain Hicks's last Town Hall meeting, she'll be mad at me for pointing this out, but we're losing her next week to greener pastures in Germany, she's been here for the last year, so she's here tonight to help out if anyone needs So, she's here tonight to help out if anyone needs anything. And with that, I will be followed by the health clinic.
Hello, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, Major Major Matthews from the Health Clinic. So, you know, known as the PCM Major Patient Center in Madison. New concert, concept for military medicine. So, and we're putting it in place here in the best way. Works really well. So, currently, we, in the last couple of months, we've been hiring new folks, so that will help with our throughput. Recently, we brought on five new MSAs to work the front desk, so you can get checked in quicker now instead of having a line that runs out the door. Now, we're able to get to one quicker. We're also bringing on some new nursing staff to help support the PCMs, so you can get through to your provider quicker as well. So, if you cut down on your wait time to get in and see your provider. We also have been authorized to announce for a civilian physician to be here as well. So, we put that forward this week. That means we'll be able to see patients now on Thursday mornings during sergeant's time, as well as on all of our military training holidays, we'll have a civilian working those days. So, that'll open up about 100 more appointments per week that we don't currently have when we have them come onboard. Of course, we know with CPAC, that may be a minute or two, but at least the process has started. As you know, summer is PCS time. All of my providers are leaving. 100% turnover of providers over the summer, starting the first of June through the 31st of, through the end of September, I'll lose all my providers. So, they're all gonna be new. So, bear with us, there'll be a steep learning curve with them. So, we'll work through that training process as they get comfortable and get onboarded. So, you'll start seeing a new PCM. You know, that's the life of military, you'll get a new PCM. But the first one arrived today in country, so he should be in a clinic here in the next three days. We have that authorization. 121 is helping send over some help over the summer. It looks like two right now throughout the summer times to help cover that overlap and underlap. So, we're making those arrangements to get them onboard. They'll start showing up sometime early May to help some of our shortage problems. I'll let Colonel Lindsey speak on the restationing over, will you?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to also say Colonel Reeves, the commander of the hospital, really wanted to be down here. He's TDY off Penn, so he asked me to come down here to make sure that we conveyed that we understand you have concerns down here. You've got a lot of changes going on, just listening to some of these briefs that people have been putting out. So, we hear it. We are, as Major Matthews is saying, we're trying, as an organization, a medical organization of the Insula, to react and get you all better staffing and the resources you need down here. He hit on some great things, just hit on a couple of more. They've been working tirelessly at the clinic, and Colonel Hill, trying to get additional hiring actions, and the team that's over here at the clinic. There's another 13 to 15 that are out there in the pipeline. Some of them have been open for as long as a year. Some are recent additions to the hiring actions we have out there. But several psychiatrists, psychologists, dieticians, LPNs, RNs, medical support assistants, 'cause every single person in that clinic helps and works with each other to be, to make it more effective and efficient, and the care that's delivered is not just the provider that does it on their own. So, we'll continue to push that. As you said, we got a couple of providers we're looking at moving internally. You got a PA that just arrived. The provider we're looking at bringing in from up north is either gonna be a family practitioner or a general medical officer that's really a Pete's person, so it'll, either one of those will allow for more of the children to be seen. That'll help a little bit of access there. So, we'll continue to do that. We're also trying to do a more of an enterprise approach. Things that we can gain efficiency for and take off the clinic here and allow them to do more hands-on care. The central appointments, appointing system kicked in a couple, about a month or so ago. We're seeing some positive trends. I hope you all are seeing that or feeling that. But the wait times for appointments from our automated system is showing four-minute average down to less than a minute average for answer, or calls to be answered. That also helps at your front desk, so that clerk at the front, or the MSA, doesn't have to decide, am I gonna take care of the person to get him checked in that's in front of me, or am I gonna answer the phone that's ringing there that's been ringing for however long, a minute or two? So, we're trying to answer some of the concerns out here. By no means do we have everything figured out yet. Like you said, the summer over, underage, we're trying to limit that. We're extending out some folks as much as possible to ensure that we have a good overlap. And then, you got some great folks that are coming in to replace those folks that are leaving out. Great team was here. You're gonna have great people coming in. So, at least one husband-wife team, a pediatrician and a family practice provider coming in. Great things that they'll be able to help add to the team here. Real quick, wanted to hit on our restationing. I know you all talked about some of the facilities that are opening up. You see 65th Med Brigade Headquarters and some of that other stuff, Building 370. Building 370, thanks to the Garrison with supporting us on that, does allow us to get some additional primary care space in the clinic itself, which will allow, as troops move down or family members move down, we can move PCM teams with them, and they'll have space to move into to take care of that population that's moving down here. So, you're not just gonna get more people with no medical staff. That medical staff will move with them, and we'll work that so that they're, you're not just increasing without seeing any assistance coming. The second floor of the current TMC, once the new dental clinic gets their furniture, we'll add in some more exam rooms that'll allow us to have enough for the total restationing of the folks until the new hospital opens. And right now, until January 2018 with the new opening date. So, that little ways off. As an interim, I know there's a lot of interest in 24/7 care. It's not really here right now, internal to post. The Brigade Commander has committed to, summer of 2016, we will have a 24/7 presence here with a provider that's in the clinic during all the time. I mean, weekend, evening. Now, will that clinic stay open, or that ambulatory care center stay open all the time? Probably not. It'll be, once the clinic closes, normal appointments, then the ambulatory care center would open up to cover the rest of the night and the weekends and stuff. So, we are committed to that. We gotta work on the resources. We got an initial financial commitment from MedCom to help pay for that, but that's, you know, kinda the same thing as attracting folks to come here. So, we'll continue to work that. We're committed to getting you the resources, though, that you need here. And then, the last one is just Host Nation Hospital. I know some people love it, some people hate it. I think it depends on where you go, when you go, what experience, what time it is. So, I'm not saying it answers every single question, but there's some top-quality care out there at a lot of those facilities. My wife likes going there. She raves on it. The one that we wanted to make sure we brought up, and Major Matthews has already sent out his team, we'll be going down from the hospital next month, is Piumtech St. Mary's Hospital. If you haven't seen, that's been, it's right here. So, Good Morning's right there. So, it's, we just drove, we stopped there on the way down here. It's 18 minutes from out there, emergency room door, to the gate here on Post. So, brand-new facility. They got an international clinic in there. We went through the ED. There's 20 beds in there. There's not a lot of people there right now, since it's new. They opened in February, I believe. So, it looks like a very good clinic. The Tricare team brought in, I believe, was it about 10 people that came in from Japan and Guam to do a survey of it and make sure the quality is there? So, some good news, gives you options to go to that's closer than some of those ones like St. Vincent's or Dungook or those other hospitals and university hospitals that are a little farther away. Major Matthews, anything else?
I would just like to add for the nervous moms and dads for this football clinic, my Captain Vega, my physical therapist, and her team will be on site both days for the entire time. So, if you have an injury, she'll be right there to treat it right then. So, the whole team will be there. So, that should have some of those nervous mom words. I'll be followed by the dental clinic.
Good evening. Beecham, representing the dental clinic. You can see our hours, and when we're open, 7:30 to 16:30 a day, and our front desk phone number there, that's the best number for calling, asking questions, getting appointments made, things of that nature. Currently, we don't have a whole lot of capabilities for the community. We're mainly focused towards active-duty soldiers in our current clinic. However, there are a couple of exceptions. If you are active duty and have a child that's 12 years of age or younger, we do have a pediatric dentist on staff, so they can be seen. Just call that front desk number, and we can give their information and give them the schedule to be seen. We also have hygiene appointments that are available for dependents of active-duty soldiers. Once again, typically, it's gonna be 7:30 in the morning, because most of our soldiers are gonna be PT at that time. So, there's 24-hour advance notice on that, so call the day ahead. It's open, you need to have a phone in, and your clinic will take care of it. So, very limited right now. We go to the next slide. We just touched on, this is our new clinic that is 95% complete with the construction of the physical building itself. Buying the equipment that goes in this building is ongoing, but, so we don't know exactly when it's gonna be open. But if you go to the next slide, these are gonna be our capabilities we want to be doing that. It's gonna be the largest clinic in the Army around the world by one chair, and all of the specialists on the Insula will be in this building. So, a big boost in capabilities in this facility. Followed by the clinic.
Hi, I'm Captain Alvarez from the Veterinary Clinic on Post, and thank you very much for letting me come tonight. And I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the services that we offer in our clinic. There is a fact sheet with our phone number and our location and our hours of operation with the medical, if you wanna pick that up. The majority of our patients do present to us for wellness care, you know, annuals, implanting microchips, that sort of thing, and pet registration. We do see sick pets on an outpatient basis, and we're trying really hard to open up some like next-day or even same-day sick pet appointments for those sort of urgent needs. We do have some options for referring you to all Post facilities as well, and we have that information in the veterinary clinic. Next slide. As a pet owner myself, I would like to encourage you to please register your pets with us in the event of NEO, particularly in any volunteer phase. It's really gonna open up a lot more options for you in terms of where you could go with your pets, if you have your medical paperwork in order. For example, voluntarily evacuating to Hawaii or Japan, you know, is only gonna be an option if you have the necessary tests and vaccinations and that sort of thing, unlike going to the US. So, it is a Garrison and housing requirement, but as a veterinarian, I mean, and a pet owner, I feel like there's even more important reasons for doing that. So, just call the clinic, and we'll set up a five-month appointment for you to bring your paperwork in and make sure that you have everything that you need to go. The other thing that I'll mention is, it does make it a bit easier for us to help you if your pet is ill, if we have some information about them, some medical information about them in advance. So, if they're registered with us, then, you know, we have easy access to their record. Pet stores in many countries of the world offer puppies and kittens that are poor representatives of the breed, to put it very kindly, and Korea is no exception. We do see pet store puppies that are sick with contagious disease, vaccine-preventable diseases, parasites, have a lot of defects that they're born with because of some substantial breeding programs, and we do end up treating these puppies and kittens in the clinic. And it is really heartbreaking for the people that give them. So, we would like to encourage you to adopt a pet. There are many shelters out there, and on the back of our fact sheet is a list of all the shelters that are available. And then, of course, you'll wanna register them with us within two days. So, we're just asking you to step away from the puppies. I will be followed by the chaplain.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chaplain Tonkins. I'm the Deputy Garrison Chaplain. If you peruse the slide, I'm showing you tonight our services and the ministries that we offer. As was mentioned in a previous slide, the Freedom Chapel will not last forever. It will be demolished around the, well, we have to be out by the first of July. But we're building four chapels at Camp Humphreys right now, and one will not be ready by then. Please don't fret, thanks to the high school and other facilities helping us out. Services will not stop. We will have services in the building that was mentioned before, 577 is where our Religious Support Operations Center will relocate. And this will be happening here in the next several months, probably by the first of June. We'll have a decommissioning service at the Freedom Chapel and move into our swing space, if you will, until our first chapel is complete. If you can peruse that, like I said, it's kinda confusing, 557 and 577. I promise I didn't do that on purpose, but these are our two buildings. Please just take note of that. But right now, this is where we're at, and we'll be here for about the next month and a half or so. We'll put this word out through all of our mass media and everything when we do make this move. The only thing I'd like to point out is we do at the very last, there, we all call duty chaplain. We do have a chaplain, as most of you know, on call 24/7 to help you out. So, if you ever need anything, just call that. Thank you. I will be followed by these folks.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Kennedy, and the principal of the high school. And with me is Joyce Diggs, the principal of the elementary school. The first thing we'd like to talk about to you, for you this evening, is the PTEC visit, and that's the Pacific Theater Education Council. They will be coming to visit us in May, and this is the opportunity where they come and check our schools, and see what we're doing, what we're offering, and they also need input from parents and the community members. So, they've set up at a time, will be on May 14 at 1:30. There'll be a special meeting. We encourage you to attend, especially if you have questions or concerns about the education that your children are getting here at Camp Humphreys. And then, some information from our elementary school, some important dates. Wednesday, the 29th is a PTSO meeting at 2:45 in the cafeteria, and they appreciate everyone that can come in and help with that. Thursday, May 11th is a SAC meeting. It's also open to the public. It begins at 2:45 in the cafeteria. And then, the 13th is a PTSO meeting at 2:45 in the cafeteria. We're gonna need a lot. May 14th is the acceleration date for anyone PCSing. This is true of both the elementary, the middle, and the high school. This is the date by which, or it's especially important for high school credit. You cannot earn a semester of credit unless you go at least through May 14, and you do all of the work required for that semester ahead of time. So, it's a lot of work on students, but if you get that in, get those requests in, the teachers will work out an educational plan for you to make sure that everything can get done, so that your student gets the credit that they should get for the course this year. Friday, May 15th, the elementary school has no school for students, because we're gonna have math awareness training. And then, Wednesday, May 20th, progress reports will go home. And Monday, May 25th, is Memorial Day, so it's a federal holiday. And Friday, May 29th, is the Teacher in Service Day. So, it's CSI for teachers. Go to the next slide. I'm not gonna read all these dates to you. The high school's busy. Lots of good things going on, but what I really wanna point out is re-registration. That occurred in March. We're still missing some families. Is the elementary school missing them as well? Every family needs to re-register. It's very important, because this is how we get staffed, you know? So, we can't get enough teachers here. If we think 100 less students are gonna be here, then they're not gonna staff us for those 100 students. So, it's very important that we get re-registered, even if you're moving. Re-register so that we'll know, we can keep our database up, so that when we need additional teachers, we can get them in time. And then, the other thing I really wanna point out is... And then the other thing I really want to point out is this Friday is the Far East Honors Music Festival Concert. It's at six o'clock in the high school auditorium, and you're in for a treat if you can come. It's free, and it is the best talent in Japan, Okinawa, Guam, and Korea. These high school students had a tryout. It was selected only by blind tryout, and they're very good, and they put together a concert that you will not believe, those high school students. So if you have time, please come by and enjoy that. It will be a performance of a lifetime. I won't say that about our talent show on the twenty-eighth of April. We don't know what we'll have on that one. But again, we're expecting all the exciting things of any high school. We have our prom coming up. We have a fine arts music night that's also free for everyone, and that's kind of like art in the park. We have a courtyard, and you can go there, and the students will perform music, drama, art will be displayed. So it's just a really nice night. Hopefully the weather will hold out for us. And then on May twenty-second, that's our field day. If anyone wants to volunteer and come help and stand out and play and do games, we welcome you. And then we're out of school on Memorial Day. And then, I think, the biggest day for most kids this year is June fifth, graduation for all of our seniors, so we're very excited. And that will wrap up our school year. And now I'm going to turn it over to Decca.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Kimberlows of Calm City. The US poultry embargo that's been in place by the Korean government continues. No US poultry products, eggs, anything containing poultry is not going to be allowed into the country. We have local poultry and eggs with approved sources available. We don't expect this to end anytime soon. Other than that, I have a side bulk sale scheduled for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen May. Items, a minimum of thirty percent savings. Most of my vendors indicated today that they are going to mark their items down to fifty percent. So it'll be a good opportunity to stagger up on some of the non-vehicle items. That's all I have, and I'll pass this over to Mr. Diggs.
Good evening. I'm Steve Penny with the Exchange. For us, we have a Bose roadshow sale on May first, and a Sony sale on the fifteenth of May. Those are our roadshows, we'll be having specials on those. And then on the twenty-ninth of May, we'll have an ice cream eating contest at Baskin Robbins, so please stop by for that. The last thing I want to talk about is the poultry ban embargo. It's starting to affect a lot of our facilities. Right now, Charlie Stakerie, we don't have any chicken there at all. We're looking for local sources. Don't really have a get well date. Also affected is Burger King, some of their chicken products. We don't have local sources for. Our buying team out of Okinawa is looking for sources. We were able to find some for Popeyes Chicken because their chicken is not being allowed in, so we found a local source for that. There was an increase in price because it's much more expensive locally. Again, we're trying to find avenues to alleviate it, but it's becoming a big problem at a lot of our food facilities, so please bear with us. That's all I have.
All right. That concluded the planned discussion. Now we're going to have a little open discussion. Sir, I want to start it off. We have a question from our Facebook fans. Regina Pubtannen writes, are there, this is for you, Don, are there any pools, options for children's swimming lessons at any of the pools on post?
I don't think we do have any children's swim programs just now, but let me look into that. I'll get your address or a way to contact you, get back to you. I don't know right now what exactly we have planned for the summer. In previous summers, we've had some swim lessons at the Splish Flash, but I don't know. I can honestly answer you, but I'll definitely get back to you on the answer.
All right, Regina, we owe you an answer. Now we'll open it up. Got another card? All right. May we have a car wash rack for POV's or contract people to wash cars like in Yonson? That goes to you again, though.
Well, actually, I might defer that to Steve Penny. Steve, have you got plans for a car wash?
We went out and tried to solicit a couple of vendors, so we still are actively looking for that. The problem with that is right now is to try to find a facility to handle the wastewater, quite honest. So we'd have to look for like a steam option that they have at home. Plus, we talked to a couple of vendors, but nobody stepped up to the plate to do it. So we're actively looking, but so far, no success.
Yeah, one of the big things with the car wash is you've got to have an oil-water separator, and we lost that. Like, we took a spray wash out maybe two years ago, maybe two and a half years. I don't know how long it was. So even, we have to get a waiver from USFK to allow FRGs to run car washes in front of our headquarters company from now on, you know, because technically it doesn't go with environmental guidelines. So they're kind of cracking down a little bit. You know, with that oil-water separator, it's kind of a tough hurdle. So we are trying to get past that. There are a couple of places though, just off post, you go straight out the front gate. There's a Brazilian restaurant to the left, and turn right, and you go about an eighth of a mile, you've got a spray wash right there. Or you turn right or outside the gate, go down to the golf range, and right before, turn left to go to the range, there's an automated car wash that costs six thousand dollars. But there are some options on post. We will continue to look for on post options, but it's a little tougher than you think it would be.
A little bit of a long-term option is, as will be the case with many things, is there's a car wash schedule for the new auto center, which will open in sixteen. Sorry, can't tell you any better news than that.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go, I think somebody's filling out a card, but we have a question, sir.
How you doing, sir? I wanted to address the issue of the dog parks and the old housing, specifically old housing. I have some notes, I don't miss anything. It's getting hotter, and there's dog poop in the grass to a significant amount. It is not healthy due to, you know, puppies that you spoke about. It costs a lot for us to bring our animals from other countries to Korea, and a lot of us have a lot of family ties with our pets. And the negligence of other people's, an ability to pick up their fecal matter of their dogs, and irresponsibility. I have tried to address this with the housing representative, Ms. Sarah Williams, and I got that without proof. I have to fill out a form with a proof and pictures and time and date to have something done, which she could not specify what would be done. But I am a soldier. I don't have time to stalk people, take pictures, out of my balcony, to watch people over the dog parks, because there's four of them. And it's about the PCS season here, and we would like, or me, my family, and friends that have come here tonight, would like to know what we're going to do to try to change this, adjust this, and to make it better for our little ones.
What's your name?
Sergeant Ekman, sir.
Sergeant Ekman. Okay.
Three-two, Delta.
That's okay. I've got you. Hey, I agree with you. Okay, I've actually went over to your housing area and picked up the dog poop myself a few times. You're welcome. You know, there's about two percent of the people out there that just can't figure it out, you know? And then there's kids who just do kids stuff. You know, my kids, ABC is just one of those. It does sound like you're a CID officer, so I don't expect you to take pictures and do all that. I'll talk to Beth Wilson. It shouldn't require a full, you know, thirty-two page packet for me to, you know, send a shot over the bow to someone that's not fulfilling their responsibility. At the same time, you know, I only have a certain amount of folks that can sit and watch, you know, certain things. And there are, there's some, I'd rather be watching, you know, speeders and stuff like that, you know, versus people not picking up after their dogs. If you see someone, and I know, and everybody knows everybody in the housing, if you see someone doing it, and it's, you know, Sergeant Conpride or whatever, tell the housing. And, you know, and we'll send a polite shot over the bow. I have a lot of authorities when it comes to housing. And so, like I said, just do that, but I don't want to get into some green on green stuff. Where two people are mad at each other, but that's why, but she's probably asking for a few more details. But you're right. And I think that, and we've done this before, we've sent out a few warnings and things kind of cleaned up, and I thought I was going to get out of here without another dog poop incident, but it's very bad. So I just ask that you and the other tenants, if you see it happen, just tell us who did. And you know what? And just don't send us anonymous. We need to know who you are so we can talk to you about it. But we'll keep your name, you know, out of the loop, and then we will address it with that person that won't pick up that group. Is that fair enough right now? Actually, I had a plan at one point, and had this DNA director, working with this DNA director called poo prints. And so we're going to take a DNA sample of every dog that you brought into the vet clinic. We might, maybe my early would do this. And so you have a guy in the white uniform and the big tongs, he comes out there and picks it up, puts it in a bag, sends it off to poo prints, and we know it was a little skippy to bit. And then we find it. But I'm not kidding. I mean, I was so fed up with it. I mean, that was almost the point I was going to get to. So that might be another option. A lot of large apartment complexes in big cities are going in that direction. But it would cost each of the, each, it would cost forty dollars for each dog to do that in addition, if the DNA sample in addition to the chip you're getting. So it's something we might revisit also.
I don't know, sir. I paid roughly about four thousand dollars alone in shipping my dog from Germany over here and having to get him a European passport, an American passport, to bring him over into Korea and all the, that chaos and stuff. And I know others that have high-value dogs and that have been members of their families for many years, would hate for something to go wrong because just enough apartment three-eleven or whatever, or many other apartments that are in my building that, you know, again, I don't know their names. I just see them out there, don't pick up their dog poop, and I confront them, and they know me as the asshole. Sorry. They know me as the jerk down on the first floor that's watching that one dog park, but it's not just my dog park.
It's you, Oklahoma State.
Roger, sir.
Right? So don't feel bad about that at all.
Do you have any recommendations that happen to taught us?
Well, I don't, and I was really trying to address that with some of my friends because you don't come with a problem and no answer. But I don't know what to do. I have tried to adjust it through my building manager. I've written emails to the housing, and now I'm here, and I figured this has to be the last step. So I've tried, you know, my avenues and my lanes, and I've even confronted individuals myself, and I know others have, and I've talked to them, I've sworn at them out the damn, the darn balcony, and I'm like, what do you need? Do you need dog park bags? And yet, they still can't pick up, and these are grown men and women. If I can do it, and I really have a problem with it, then I do it out of respect for others.
Yeah, I can tell you that, like Sergeant Conpride said, there has been a whole lot of discussion on numerous occasions about this, from a lot of people, and even at our house with the senior spouses on post, we've addressed it on numerous occasions. And, you know, barring having someone come and physically watch the locations, the best solution that we could come up with, minus the poo prints, was to, you know, for someone to submit a photo to housing with the information, because without that, you can't, you know, really do anything. And I know that this was a problem up in one of the other areas, and in the end, they said, no more dogs in the area. So it's not an easy solution. I mean, if anybody has any recommendations, please submit them. You know, I mean, we just, there's no solid answer.
Yeah. I have actually taken photos of these people, and then they're saying that this is not an appropriate photo, and like, what do you want me to do, take a picture of the dog crapping and the guy not picking it up? I don't know.
Send me the photo. Send me the photo.
Will do, sir.
All right, I'm unglued. Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right.
Sir, we have cameras inside our building, in our hallways. Is it not where we can put those in the dog cars and?
CCTV is like the lawyer. He just wrote that down. I wanted to, I think he wanted me to say that, but I wanted to look into it a little bit more and furrow my mouth and committed to something. So I had the uncommittal look.
And not everybody is educated. Most people are not educated on, you know, the matter of what problems they can really cause, you know, and what can cause. Maybe you'll do educational for young kids, you know, young kids, and just not just fire and forget, you know, eventually everybody will fire and forget.
I got it. Okay, send me photos, although it's CCTV. Are you not going to say anything else, sir? Okay. You might need to mic, use the microphone. So you go on the record.
Well, I think that I can talk loud enough. The thing about CCTV, who is going to monitor? Who? Housing, are you going to hire an additional person to come and monitor that? And where's the funding going to come from? Those are the kinds of things that you have to think about when you have suggestions. And that's where the poo prints came in, because it puts the onus on the owners. So if you're going to bring suggestions, you have to look at all of the second, third, and fourth order effects, and how it's going to affect the garrison, how it's going to affect the budget. You have to look at all of those things. So before you bring it, just make sure that you're looking at those things. And that's why, again, we wanted to put it back on the owners. If you're wanting to bring your pets over, then you're responsible, and that's where the poo prints came in. If it's something that you all want, then let them know, but the owners are the ones that are responsible. If you go out into the civilian sector, you don't have anybody monitoring with CCTV. You don't have them hiring an extra person. You don't have any of that. This, as much as we want this to be, you know, kind of a utopia, there are restrictions that we have. There are budgetary restrictions, and the garrison and the units, they have to fall under that, and you have to remember that, okay?
With that, DES is going to look at, there are cameras back there. They're aimed in the other direction, I think, mostly, but we'll see what we can do as far as pan them back over there. And at least there'd be a recording. All right. But no, thanks for bringing that up.
All right, sir. We've got a lot of questions, so we're going to go to Jerry Fritz's question. Who can DOD civilians contact about getting routine medical care, RX in parentheses, at Camp Humphreys? I think this goes to the head.
Was it?
All right, I believe it's been answered. It's been answered online? Okay, excellent. So we don't have to answer that one. Does anybody need the answer to that? It's not online? Okay. Next question. Can we use the wash rack used by military vehicles? I think we're back to the car wash. I know what that answer is already. I can see the shape. Go ahead.
No. The existing wash rack is established just for military vehicles. The military vehicle is only, but POV's in the area, then there's an incident or an accident, and there's government liabilities involved, so all POV's are excluded from utilizing a military wash rack.
All right. Another question. Can we please install a visitor parking sign along the curb on G Avenue?
Okay, so on the curb opposite of the family housing facility. You know what? Yeah, we need to do something about that, you know? Whether you know it or not, you're not supposed to park on the near side of the curb, or the curb closest to the newest army family housing towers. You get in the way of the fire, the emergency services and stuff, you do that. There's nothing that tells you you're not supposed to do that, otherwise it's not marked. But you can park on the other side, and so we probably need to do a better job of marking that. And so, yeah, that's something that we will do.
All right, we got a yes. So moving.
Yeah, I ain't leaving. You're not just kidding. But no, that's the right thing. In fact, we run into a lot of problems with that. So yeah, that needs to, it's not intuitive.
Okay, it's a time contingent, yes. Is it possible to squeeze more parking spaces, maybe parallel spots, even one or two near the one stop? Even just one or two? Something would free up lawyer spots? Thank you. I'm sorry?
Moped spots.
Okay, moped spots.
I want moped spots.
Okay. Are we looking for moped spots?
Well, like today, or the last two times I've been there, there's not been, like, you drive around for ten minutes in the process, and today there's a moped and a full-size spot, so even if they just... So even if they just, there's a little, I don't know, if there's, there's room to find space for a couple moped spots, like in the parking garage in G Avenue is a great solution, because we haven't had a problem since they added the motorcycle spot, except there's, I don't know.
Are we talking G Avenue or one stop?
One stop, this is a one-stop question.
Just one stop around that area?
We'll take a look at that, they say it's a crowded area, it's almost impossible to get a park, to get a, to park there, I know that.
Ever since the unit went in over by, um, an old education center, um, even that street, to, like, all the way from there, or the ACM, we're gonna.
We'll look, we'll look at that. So you're wanting, so you're thinking that if we had a couple moped spots, we'd be able to open up some additional full seats?
Like today, it would have helped, give it a big spot, or, like, there's a big neighbor stripe area, I don't know if they could maybe make that one more spot?
That's my parking spot. Now, I got it, we'll take a look at that.
Respond for a moped, all right, that, that was all the cards I have, uh, open for questions?
Yes, sir, it's ma'am.
Let me get your mic, hold on.
I'll go for it.
Hey, rules of etiquette for the folks on Facebook that they wanna follow, please use the microphone even when you're asking or responding to a question.
Okay, with, with all of the construction going on on post, it's been really difficult to give directions to where everything is located. Would it be possible to put signs up, coming soon? Because we have a lot of places where I can see that there's something being built. And sometimes it even says it in Korean, but we don't know what it is.
So like in front of the, excuse me, in front of the new dental clinic, coming soon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Something as simple as that, I think, would help to, um,
Med, med ten?
Make people feel more comfortable with what is coming, excited about it, instead of complaining about just the construction.
Okay, so here's a deal, I'll get you excited about what it is, but not when it's actually gonna open up. I'll put what it is, but no date.
That sounds right.
You know what, that's, and that'll showcase things a lot better, in fact, I, I drive around with people all the time, and I'm like, I just make up as I go along. But, uh, it'll probably help me on my tours, so that's a really good idea.
All right, that was another yes, other questions?
Okay, it's my last town hall, you cannot let me get off this either. And we do have, again, we have, oh, there you go, yes, sir.
I don't have a complaint, I have a.
Hold on.
I, I don't have a complaint, I have a praise, and it's for the medical thing.
Do you work there?
But, those, those people, uh, here recently, I had a surgery on my kidneys, and, uh, they really expediated, just, I got there really fast, I got to meet a specialist in, uh, St. Vincent's in Suaon. And, uh, you know, I'll come back across the world and have, you know, have it again, if they ever ghosted that again, but, uh, they really took care of me, and, you know, it helps me a little praise every once in a while, so, thank you.
Now, talking about the medical thing, we did bring a big, big medical team down here, and I know, uh, Colonel Lindsay gave a great brief to talk about all the things we're gonna do, but are there any other concerns or issues, or things you wanna bring up with regards to our medical care here in Area Three? You can't let them get off you. Okay, I, I knew it would take a little bit.
It's always me, I apologize. Um, just a suggestion, I think some of our family members might feel more comfortable with the Korean hospitals if they had some more information at hand about, you know, directions on how to get to them, what services are offered, when the English-speaking people are there, kind of, if there was kind of a one, a one-pager or something like that, that would kind of help them feel more comfortable with the facilities. Um, you know, we have the new hospital, which you guys just talked about, which I knew nothing about, um, so I don't know how that's gonna get pushed out to the community to kind of know what other resources are available at the Korean hospitals, might help raise the comfort level a little bit.
Yes, ma'am, we're working on a trifold for that, and, uh, some maps to hand out at the newcomers' brief. The new hospital just came online last week, so we haven't had a chance to share that news yet, that's why that hasn't been announced yet.
And the current ones are in the current panel that we give out, and all the services are listed.
We'll get a copy, and the notes from Harrison are also posted on Facebook.
Right, uh, Sergeant Andrew just, just said, yeah, recognize newcomers getting the information that everybody's getting, and we're gonna get the, the notes and post it on Facebook and find other medias to get it out to you.
But also, there's an American liaison, there's a English-speaking liaison at all of the hospitals that we use. And if you're having difficulties, come by the clinic, we have a, a driver that can get you to that position, to wherever that liaison may be. We're having to rehire one, so don't come tomorrow. We will have one on board soon. But there is an English-speaking liaison at all of the facilities that will take you through the clinic, through the hospital, and will escort you around and get what you need. As well as if you go, if you're consulted to there, the driver who takes you there will take you to the liaison as well. So, while that is angst for many, there is one there who has passed an English test. And then any, any prescription that you receive there, you can bring it back to our clinic, they'll have one of our providers rewrite it into one of our prescriptions, and you can get it filled at our clinic as well.
And where the English-speaking liaison is that twenty-four hours a day at all the hospitals?
That liaison is not twenty-four hours a day at all the hospitals, the question was, is the English-speaking liaison at the hospital twenty-four hours? That is not the case, go ahead, sir.
They're, they're not there twenty-four hours, but the ED, I mean, that's primarily where you're gonna go after hours, if you're heading there. They, they do have someone on call, um, so, so they're supposed to have someone that can speak English on duty, or have someone on call that they can call to. Just like the one we just went to with, uh, St. Mary's, the new one, before we got here, uh, they have someone that's on twenty-four-seven call, uh, that can, uh, that can, they can contact and then use for interpretation services. I, I, I'm the first to admit, it doesn't always, the ED, it, it's, the provider probably speaks English, the nurses may or may not, um, and the interpretation service may not be ideal, but it, it, it does work fairly well overall.
And also, sir, they can contact international SOS, they have translators twenty-four hours a day, and they can communicate with the host station hospital and relay information to the patient.
Okay, so, so she was saying, for those that couldn't hear, uh, international SOS, the, the actual managed care support contractor, basically what you all would think TRICARE, um, has someone on call twenty-four-seven. But, but, you, you hit it right on the nose, though, I mean, I know we do have educational pamphlets and stuff, but, but obviously, if you're not seeing it, we need to do a better job. So, so we'll take that away also, not just for here, here are the great things you all are talking about, I'll put it on Facebook and, and some other locations. We'll look at it too enterprise-wise across the peninsula, how we can do a better job of getting that out there, because we've got the information, we've got all the specialties and, and the times, and, uh, all this, lots of information, but we obviously need to do a better job of getting that information out there.
And I would like to add, we've seen a couple of complaints where folks, for some reason, believe they're not allowed to go to a civilian ER during duty hours. That's not the case. You can always go to an emergency room, and TRICARE will reimburse them, because they reimburse emergencies. So you can always go to the emergency, it doesn't matter what time of the day it is, we prefer that you come to the clinic, but you have that option, you can go to the emergency room. Then if you'll come to TRICARE, we will assist you in getting that reimbursement. So, instead of struggling through that on your own, please come to the clinic, we'll get you to the TRICARE, and we'll assist you with that mountain of paperwork to get that reimbursement to you. So please don't feel as though you can't go, because it's nine to five, you have that option. Again, we would prefer you try to come to the clinic, but you have that option.
Uh, we have a, uh, a dog on post that, I don't know if the dog might, yes, but, uh, he's, we got here back in June, and he's been running wild before that, he had a collar on his neck that's cutting into his throat. It's bleeding, uh, the dog's suffering, and he's, 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 uh, he's aggressive, and he's, he's very temperamental around, from people, but, uh, I know there's a capture kill over on this dog, I'm assuming, but, I, I, I found the dog the other day, I ran a professional kennel for several years, and, you know, this dog, it needs to be, it needs to be caught and, and at least taken off, or something.
I know what dog you're talking about, and he is number one on the JTL right now.
Well, I, I, I found him the other day, and I, there was two, uh, canine units right there, I pointed it out to him, and they gave me directions to go to DPW. I got there, and there was nobody that spoke English.
Okay.
Uh, and so, it just finally, they, uh, somebody called MP's and they ran him off, instead of trying to catch him.
Okay. What they're trying to do is to corner the dog.
Right, this dog, this dog is, is not stupid.
You're right, he's not stupid, there's an off-post service, the off-post fire department will come and tranquilize him and get rid of him. But the problem that we're having is, the, the dog takes off and goes out the gate, and then we have to wait for him to come back.
Right. Well, if we at least could instruct our MPs to, to, to have them number, they can call these people, they just didn't.
They, they do have a number, and they do call them, well, the problem is, the, the fire department, the off-post fire department, they're not gonna come here unless we have the dog. So, you know, it, it, it's hard to get all that together at the same time.
Well, this, this dog is in our, in our housing communities, and there's children that pet any old dog, and, you know, uh, that's gonna be a little consequence when you get a child bit. This needs to be a really high priority, and I volunteer to help whoever's doing it, I'd allow me to catch him, if you allow me to.
Talk to me.
Mr. Thomas, when you referenced getting rid of him, don't think anything bad from that, okay, we have two questions from this gentleman right here.
Hi, uh, my name's Greg, I'm DA civilian, both of these are safety related, I think one of them is in man's safety, and then, actually, two safety. Uh, there used to be a sign, this is my second tour career, and, uh, the first time I was here, there was a sign on the road, I believe it's Alain Street, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, it runs into Zekler Station. So you've got the bus stop on the corner and, uh, the shop ad on the other side, that street running directly into Zekler Station. This sounds kind of stupid, but there used to be a sign that said, do not walk in the street. And entirely too many people think that's a giant sidewalk, and it's common sense, but could we have a sign, I, maybe, because somebody's gonna get hurt.
Uh, yeah, I'll, uh, have my staff, uh, tomorrow look at it for DES, and if it's appropriate.
I, I, active duty as civilians, as contractors, and I've seen people literally directly across, completely blocking the road, which is insane, but the sign would be something anyway. And sir, this, I think this is maybe the end, or later, the parking lot at the gym, the Zekler Gym, is not the best place for people to be doing PT in the morning. It's a safety issue for the troops, in my opinion, I wouldn't want to do setups on the asphalt personally. Leg stretches, things like that, especially at seven-thirty in the morning, cars coming, cars going, people jogging in and out of parking spaces. You've got lots of people coming and going, you've got people coming to park, you've got people leaving from other PT areas driving off, and again, somebody's gonna get hurt, I mean, literally jogging in and back in and around cars, it's dangerous.
So the big parking lot, uh, north of the track, uh?
Uh, yes, sir. The one, the one that's behind the gym?
Right, that one. But not the one on the main road, not the?
No, it's the big parking lot, and it's, it sounds kind of crazy, again, I mean, I don't know who thinks that's a good idea, do a setup on asphalt.
Okay.
Dangerous, thank you, sir.
All right. Big hands, almost on a half hour, any last questions? Sir?
Okay, well, again, I wanna, I wanna thank everyone for coming. Uh, I'm sure some of us are PCS in the summer, so for those that are PCS, best of luck, and I hope your next assignments are great. And I hope you did have a, uh, a fulfilling tour here at Camp Humphreys. I know it was, it was probably interesting with all the stuff going on here, but, uh, I appreciate y'all's patience with all the construction activities that they're placing. For those that are hanging around, you do have some challenges over the next few months, and, uh, one of these days, this is going to be a, a great post. It will be the most modern military post in the world, and I can tell you that it doesn't, doesn't go unnoticed, uh, by the most, uh, you know, the most senior people on the peninsula, that, uh, that you guys are, you're, you're taking the brunt of the punishment associated with this transformation piece. And most of you won't see the, the post, you know, PCS, well, or, uh, it's complete. But, uh, again, it's, it's really appreciated, General Shampoe mentions it all the time, General Scaparotti mentions it, and so, uh, again, it's, it's greatly appreciated. So with that, um, wish you all a good night, thanks again for coming, and have a great summer.